I'd call to order the council meeting for the mayor and city council of the city at 2:00 AM for the month of January, and I ask Councilman Zambani to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Council members are present except for Councilman Frazier. Hopefully, he'll join us later. I haven't heard if he'll be here or not.
Do you want me to report on that now or later? Said he wants me to report on that now or later?
Now, we'll get it later. All right. Welcome, everybody. Our first order of business is the approval of minutes. And we've got minutes that go back for approval all the way back to the November session. So we have a slew of them to approve. We've got November the 4th, the workshop; November the 9th, the regular meeting; November 23rd, the water and sewer special meeting; December 9th, the workshop; and December 14th, the regular meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve one set or all of those minutes?
I move that we approve all.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. So carry. Okay. Next, we come to resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. For introduction tonight, we have ordinance 1920-16, Downtown Revitalization Act Amendment. It's to be introduced tonight for passage next month. Does anyone have any questions about this ordinance?
You say it's for passing next month?
Yeah. Okay. Next, we introduce ordinance 20-2016, Campaign Finance Reforms or Accounting. Anyone have any questions on this ordinance?
I do have one concern. I was hoping Jay would be here for it. Do you want to motion before we discuss?
Well, again, this is just for introduction. We can't pass tonight. Is that right, Henry?
Right.
So it could, I mean, it can wait for Jay if you need it to, but Henry could answer.
Well, I'll bring up my concerns. We can discuss them next month at length. I still want to see, I don't want to see a, any loophole by the way of, well, I'm going to self-finance and I'm not going to spend more than this. I really don't want to see that. I want to see everything reported. I think it's important that we do so. Other municipalities have something like that. I don't think it's unreasonable. The other thing that concerns me is Section 189B. It says, "Contributions of a candidate or the candidate's spouse to the candidate's own campaign are not subject to the limitations of this section." I don't think that should be at all because that creates another loophole where, you know, a spouse can collect the money and then give it to the candidate, and nothing's going to be reported at that point.
Well, if all of you agree to that, then that can be incorporated in the next month.
Okay.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Interesting point. I'd certainly like to see what Jay has to say about it next month.
Okay.
Well, that was delay. You know, we can put it in and then you can strike it out.
Well, if he addresses it at the workshop and there's still dissatisfaction, we can still pass it at the meeting.
All right.
And we've got until next January anyway, so.
That's true.
Yeah.
All right. Now for approval. We have the rate schedule for CDM over 2016. Anyone care to make a motion to approve?
There was a question about one of the categories, if I recall.
The design drafter, I believe.
Right. And that's, that's a new position that was created to basically be, come up in between the two categories. Not quite as, you know, let me find my notes here. Says it's, it's new and the design, what the, the difference between the two, the design drafter and the CAD operator, is that one can take the idea from concept to a drawing, and the other one can take the specs to a drawing.
Okay.
That's the major difference between the two.
Any other questions regarding the?
Did they tell you what determination they make on whether it goes to a CAD operator, design drafter, senior design drafter, or just whoever's at their desk?
I just asked what the differences were.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Give her a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. So carry. The Maryland Environmental Service Contract. We had a presentation from MES regarding the operation of our water and sewer plant. The information was detailed in our packets. Have any desire to make a motion to approve this? It was pointed out that it was cost prohibitive based on what we're doing now.
I move that we reject the proposal.
Do we have to move to reject, or we just don't take any action?
It'd probably be better if you take some action away.
All right. It's been moved to reject and seconded. Is there any second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. So carry. Actually, we have the memo of understanding regarding pawn shops and precious metal dealers. This is an updated version of an agreement we've had with the sheriff's department for a number of years. Anyone care to make a motion to approve that memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Just to comment on that, you were probably going to have a couple more of these because those MOUs were with the previous sheriff, and that's why they expired.
Okay.
Okay.
For adoption tonight, it's Resolution 2016-18, the water allocation for January. Anyone care to make a motion to adopt the water allocation plan for January?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Next, we come to the city manager's report. Henry, do you have anything further for us tonight?
Yes, I do. Just one thing you would ask, if you would get in touch with State Highway to see if they would redo that sign that was in the middle of the street, and they said no. And as far as electronic signs, what you talked about, as far as the LEDs lighting up either the signs or the street, and that's not allowed, State Highway doesn't allow any of those anywhere. Anything you see like that is all on non-State Highway roads.
Is there anything else for us?
Oh, one more thing, and they won't allow us to do it either.
That was my question. It's our sidewalk. Why can't we?
Not the sidewalk.
Their crosswalk. That's the problem. Any questions for Henry? Any questions on the departmental reports? All right. Hearing nothing? Move into the legal report. Our attorney is not with us tonight. Any comments or thoughts or suggestions that we can convey to our solicitor when he returns home?
Send greetings from the Warm Waters Lawn.
His endless summer quest, that's what he's proposing on Facebook, is all his endless summer sunsets he's been sending the pictures of. Okay. Unfinished business. We have the IT policy manual up for action tonight, I guess.
Well, yeah, we made some corrections as noted, and did Dan provide those pages to you?
We have them, yes.
Okay, so you have the pages that the corrections were?
There's just one page that we received.
Well.
Is that the only correction?
It shouldn't be the only one.
Yeah, okay. You said pages. I didn't know if we were missing something.
Well, I thought it was two of them.
Oh. I think they just match now. So is that up for adoption tonight, Mr. Mayor?
It is. There's a motion to be made if we run an adopt the plan.
I move that we adopt it as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Oh, it's wonderful.
Check that.
Something that's been on the docket for a number of months, so let's put that one in the basket. Cannabis zoning, this is another one that we've discussed. I don't know whether we're going to act on this or not tonight, but do we have any, what further comments do we have on this? Have we narrowed this down to?
It's just the general direction that we go ahead and begin actually writing the policy for presentation at the next possible meeting. And then, as a, you know, side note to that, I've heard from a couple of different people over the course of the weekend, and everyone likes that we're tackling this. Everyone, you know, approves of the fact that, you know, we want to put regulations in place to restrict where a cannabis shop may open up, so.
Well, good. So the report that you gave on Wednesday, we can incorporate into something that we can act on next month. Very good. Okay. Any questions on that? I could show for that work.
You're welcome.
And others who are involved. Any other unfinished business for us tonight? Were we going to address the request about the, from the CMC for writing a letter for delay?
Well, I guess.
Probably should address it here.
Yep. That's, that's, I guess, the reason it became rather debatable as to how to go with this thing now.
Let me, Henry and I have been talking today, and the more we think about this thing, the more serious we think it is, the more effort we have to put into this. And I think that although we sympathize with the CMC and their desire to delay this process, it goes even more than that. I mean, it affects the municipalities as much as it does the CMC. I wrote an email to the county mayors today suggesting that we, in unison, will recommend some kind of delay or postponement or reexamination. I don't know what we're going to call it, but, but something of that nature where we can come up with the time to maybe analyze this in a proper fashion. I haven't heard back from all the mayors. In fact, I've only heard back from one of the mayors. But again, I just wrote the email today, so I don't expect to hear that any more than that. So what I thought I would, what we would do is just kind of formulate something that will incorporate the desires of the CMC as well as the concerns that the municipalities have for this various, for this process before we act on it. I mean, I don't see any, any possible way that this, that we, you know, who approves this thing is the municipalities and the county commissioners. And I don't see how we're, that this council's going to be ready to approve anything by February the 11th, but maybe we can. I don't know. Did we ever get this for formal review?
No.
Was it ever submitted to us?
No.
Well, I mean, I have the copy that was in my box today.
Right.
And we're looking at a pretty substantial document to go with.
Oh, I know, but.
So there's no way we can have that passed by February, for sure.
That's, that's the other thing. Our representative on the cable regulatory commission resigned today. It only took two years to find one.
The pressure was on.
I'll get to you in a minute. Just a minute. I see you. I'll call you. And she, and it's for medical reasons. It's not because she doesn't want to do this anymore, or we're harassing her or something, but she's, she's had some medical problems and really can't keep up with it. So she suggested that I talk to Carol Schoyer, who's the CMC person in charge, or I guess the only employee the CMC, not CMC.
CRC.
The Regulatory Board has. And I will plan to do that. Mayor Shaw has had a conversation with her, and she's responded to him, and he gave me a transcript of her response, and it raises a lot of questions for me, so I will.
And I had the opportunity to talk to Mayor Shaw as well today, and he expressed the same kinds of concerns that, that this took him a very long time to put together, five, six years.
Seven.
And thanks for the correction. And that they didn't, they don't feel like they, he's had enough time to even review this as well.
Right.
Well, again, I, I think we probably should make sure we have the right letter that goes to the board before we send it. Let me, let me call on Robin, and then I'll call on our chairman here.
I was late coming to the meeting on Wednesday, so I didn't, I saw everybody and said hi, but I didn't hear what the conversation was about. But I'm just hearing what you're saying. I would strongly recommend that you talk to the county because having served as commissioner for four of the years that we were negotiating this contract, Commissioner Rothschild and I sat down with everybody and went over some strong suggestions about being able to add more people to, to the line. You know, they were, they, they did like a straight mile off of certain roads, and we gave them some business models on how to connect more people, and some other ideas about how they could make it easier for the citizens to be able to connect and to be covered in the total contract. And there's a lot of, they gave us a lot of those concessions, and it will benefit a lot of citizens. And I don't know whether delay will, at this point, will mess anything up or mess any of that up, but I really would encourage you to speak to them about that because it's, a lot of good things were incorporated into the, into the contract, and it would be a shame to lose all those things by asking for a delay. So I.
Well, again, it's unfortunate that we haven't had the opportunity to look at this agreement before now.
So, but you had a liaison who was supposed to be there for the municipalities. They didn't report back to you?
My understanding is that the commission hadn't met in the past year.
Well, that's because they've had it for six years. I mean, they've been mulling over. It's just sort of been a corporate.
Well, they can mull it over.
Mindset battle.
My question is, if they haven't met in a year, how'd they come up with this in December to distribute if not all the members actually participated in a year? Really, my main concern. I feel like that commission really doesn't have their act together.
Well, it's, if you talk to all of the people involved, I think you will find that it's difficult to work with the corporate folks, that the people at our level are pretty easy to get along with, but getting it back through corporate was difficult. And the things that we were talking about were very common sense. I mean, I wasn't in the negotiations. I just had a chance to talk to all of the people and to make some suggestions, which I think they've incorporated almost all of them, and they're very good ones, and they help the citizens a lot. So I just strongly recommend that you get all the facts before you make a decision.
Well, I think that's, that's the whole purpose. We, we've been dropped, it's been dropped in our laps at the 11th hour and expecting us to act on it in 30 days, and I don't, I don't think that's realistic. And if, you know, if it's taken six or seven years to come up with what they've got, another 90 days or 120 days, it's not going to make any difference. And if it does, then somebody's trying to sell us something we don't want to buy.
Talk to Commissioner, reach out to Commissioner Rothschild, who probably knows more about it than anybody else does. And I don't know what, he and Mark Ripper, I guess, who was in the middle of it. We had hoped to get that contract settled before I left office and thought we could. So, I mean, it was just being churned over by their corporate people. I don't, I'm, I'm not sure that anything has changed. They just keep, you know, pushing to get them to sign the bottom line. So please reach out and ask a couple of questions about how difficult that might be if you delay.
Every attention is given.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, may I ask you a question? Are you able to provide a list of the things that you're mainly concerned about retaining in there? Because I'd like to make sure that they're actually in the agreement since it's been so long. Can you do that?
I, I don't even know what's in the agreement anymore.
Right. But the things that you were primarily concerned about that you don't want to lose?
I, I'll reach out to Commissioner Rothschild and have him send that to you. I don't, I'm not sure I have that information in my archives, but.
Because we can only assume that what, that what you're wanting in there is actually in there, and we don't know that. So I'd like to make sure that it is because it sounds like a valuable thing.
Yes, it is.
There's a, there's a piece that Mayor Shaw sent me that's very easy to understand. It compares the old plan with the new plan and then the result. And I'll forward that to everybody. Well, you've got it right there.
No, I don't, I don't have it. This is one that Marion provided.
Okay. Well, I've, I've got it on my email. Again, I just read the scene. That's, that's it right there.
That's it right there.
I, I mean, if I recall from Wednesday night, Marion's presentation was her concern about the very issue there of expanding service down a road, that the way it's worded, it's like more of a may, might, and not will do it.
I think there's a whole list of phrases.
Okay. Let's hear from the CMC for a few minutes.
Good evening. I'm Leo Eaton. I'm the vice chair of the board of the CMC. And first of all, thank you for what you've been saying this evening. This is very important. Now, I would agree with Robin. There are a lot of very good things in the franchise, but there are also a lot of very questionable things, as we've been informed by our director, Marion, by our legal counsel, and by our technical consultants. So we just need time, just like you need time, like all the municipalities need time to evaluate exactly what this means. Robin's point about a delay being possibly dangerous, I think we can ignore. If they've spent seven years negotiating this, they're not going to suddenly walk away from it because we are having a 30, 60, or 90-day delay. I think we all need to look at it, to evaluate exactly what it means. And as Marion told you last week, we will actually prepare a very detailed summary of the goods, the bads. You know, whenever the decision is made, you need the facts, we need the facts, the county needs the facts, the commissioners need the facts. And that's really what we're proposing when we ask for the delay and why we very much thank you, because we, you know, obviously, it's in your interests as well. So if there are any other questions, I can answer. I'm just a board member. I'm not technically sort of up to speed, but as I think many of you know, I'm in this business and have been involved in it for many years.
Counsel, have any comments on?
Would you be able to send us a list of the things that you, you don't like and that you do like?
I think that's in what Marion presented last week, so you should have all of that. And that's from our technical people and our legal counsel.
Well, the only reason I was curious is because she had outlined a couple of things in that letter, but noted that there were other things that bothered her too. So I just, I was just curious if there was any further information.
There may well be, but as, you know, as a board member, we sort of listen to our experts and let them tell us what the issues are, and then we evaluate and act accordingly.
So that'll all be in the report that's forthcoming from them. I think it's important that we take both comments into consideration because there's risk both ways.
There is.
We just need to make sure that it's, that we make our stance clear on it to the point that we're doing this for the security of the communities, and we're not trying to damage anyone else's. Right. So I think both points need to be heated in this argument.
I think the key point here is we're looking at something which will last 10 years, and we need to know, you know, we know how fast technology is changing. We need to know that what we're doing and we're voting on today is going to be still appropriate five or 10 years down the road.
And that's, you know, that was a discussion that I'd had with our IT guy, and I had with Angelo as well, is we don't know what's going to be down the road. And it looks, from the feedback I'm getting, as though cable's going out.
I think we're seeing it disappear.
You've got, right, now, you've, you've got situations that you've got Chrome and Hula and a couple of the other providers that basically plug in to your television, and you can basically stream, and it's more of an à la carte. You can pick what channels you want. The other thing is, you know, our IT guy said there seems to be a move towards hooking back up to the antennas again because you get the local free, and then it's a matter of choosing the premium channels that you want.
Right.
And makes that, so that, that's a whole new concept.
I think anybody who can predict what's going to happen five or seven years down the line doesn't know what they're talking about. But for the moment, the franchise.
We all thought VCRs were good, didn't we?
But for the moment, the franchise is what we've got, and that's what, you know, we're all dealing with and the implications of this agreement. Thank you.
I knew there was a reason I didn't take down my TV antenna.
That's where you dry your clothes over the sidewalk.
I need a place for the Starlings to sit.
As you said, the pigeons have taken over.
All right. Well, I appreciate those comments, and I think this will be an ongoing discussion. I plan to ask questions related to this at our state of the county meeting tomorrow, and I'll be interested to see what they have to say.
Wednesday?
It's 7:00 tomorrow morning at the Arts Center. Anyone who cares to go, Diane, Nancy, and I, you're all certainly welcome. We've got the golden chariot all greased up.
Oh, the free stuff. Now, there you go. I know why you're going.
I didn't say free stuff. I said we got the golden chariot all greased up.
Oh, grease stuff.
Do you need to borrow his hearing assistance?
I think so.
Anyway, if, if, the Chamber of Commerce is, for people that don't know what I'm talking about, Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring a state of the county symposium discussion at the Carroll Arts Center tomorrow at 7:00. And it's open to the public. You don't have to be a member.
It starts at 8:00.
It, it starts at 8:00, but it's.
We're leaving at 7:00.
We're leaving.
It starts at 8:00.
That's right. I'm sorry.
Well, see, that's why I don't go, because I can never really figure.
You never know what time it is.
We're leaving at 7:00.
Or where.
All's I know is I got to be here at 7:00. So anyway, we're going to be down here at 7:30.
Well, at least you know you're always on time.
As long as Diane's with him, he's on time.
As long as he has.
That's exactly right.
As long as he has the right day.
All right. The offer stands. We got room for two more in the vehicle if you want to come. Any other unfinished business? Move into new business, the monthly financial report. Care to make a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. So carry. Next, we have the accounts payable. Would anyone care to make a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Next item is the reduction of letter and credit for Antrim Mini Storage. You have a letter on your desk from CDM outlining the results of the inspection that Henry talked about Wednesday. Anyone have any questions, or anyone like to make a motion?
I think the recommendation that's in there is the amount of this surety shall be clarified by the city manager. So if you authorize him to clarify that and approve it, then we can move forward with this.
I move that we approve the, the reduction of the surety and allow Jay to define the maintenance.
Right. Second?
That's for the Antrim.
Antrim Mini Storage, yes.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. So carry. So, carry. Next is the reduction of letter of credit for Road A. You also have a CDM letter addressing that issue. Care to make a motion? Or have any questions?
I, I have some questions, Henry. The issues that it points out here, are they to be, are they required to be fixed before we do anything? Or are we going to reduce it according to this letter?
Uh, I would, the way that's written, it's, it's, it's a little bit unclear, like-
Right.
You're saying, as to whether they need to be done now or they can be done afterwards.
Well, it says the deficiency should be addressed during the one-year maintenance period.
Okay. All right, so, but the, the money that's in there is, is for the maintenance fee.
You've got the seeding and you've got the broken cap or something.
The cleanout cap, yeah.
Yeah.
Are these things that really are going to take a long time to fix, that they need a year to do it?
No. Just stipulate that, that, in your motion, that, that they be repaired if you want to. You can do that.
You can make the motion that these two items be taken care of before it's reduced.
That's, that's what I'm leaning to.
I think that's what we-
If you look at number one, it should be seeded. That means they can't do it right now.
True.
They probably won't be able to do that until, I don't know, if it'd be better in the spring or the fall.
They could, they could do it in the spring. If they, as soon as the ground's fit, they could, early, early March would be fine. They could do it.
So, do we say, what, three, six months then, or?
Theoretically, they could do it now. We'll just simply lay on the top of the ground until springtime. And what the birds didn't eat would come up in springtime, so.
Okay, well, I move-
And what about the pothole that's there already?
It's not on that street. That's not on what they did.
That's not on A?
No.
It's on A, but it's not on the new part of A.
Yeah, that's, that's actually-
About that one.
It's Conaway, Conawaygo's.
Oh, gosh, not that much, you said.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's Conawaygo's deal, the pothole? Does that become our street at all, Road A? Is it scheduled to become our?
It not, it wouldn't be for a year, that's for sure, if it were. And I'm, I'm not so sure that is. I think that's on private. I think that, that is Conawaygo all the way. How about that? I may have been wrong.
So, Conawaygo's got to fix it.
Right.
It has to be into the Sheets property.
Well, the road between Lorian and Sheets, Conawaygo's, that's not Conawaygo's responsibility.
No. Whose is it?
Is it?
Well, you want it to be ours?
Well, I don't know. I'm asking that.
But no, it's, it's, it's private in that.
Right, but is it Conawaygo, or is it the property owners that Sheets is on?
You know, I don't, again, no, I think it's Conawaygo, because Road A was, has been there for a very long time, just never been built.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm sure the surety on that was released years ago, I assume.
Probably so, because that's, there's several other out, connections like that along, along that road as well.
Right.
Well, they're, what they're saying is that they recommend it be reduced. The maintenance surety amount referenced in the request, thirteen thousand three eleven.
Right.
That's how much money we'll have left-
Right.
In the kitty.
Right.
And they're saying, uh, it should be addressed during the maintenance period, and that's what that thirteen thousand dollars is.
They should be able to buy some grass seed and a chill cap for thirteen grand.
If it's not.
Right.
Right.
You can hold that thirteen thousand forever.
Right, that's true.
If they don't fix these things.
Then I move that we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed. All right, is there any other new business to come before the Council? Amazing. We did Councilmember reports last week, but I'll do them again, just because I'm a nice guy. Joe, would you like to make a report of any guy?
I have nothing to report this week.
How about you, Brad?
Nothing new, sir.
Diane?
No.
Angela, well, that was easy. I already made my announcement that the State of the County meeting is tomorrow, so that's all we have too. How about the community? Would you would like to, what, meet? I'm sorry.
But you just get a, a bit of a point of clarification, because with the Council members' report, because I know initially you said that it was just going to be Wednesday. And it's been kind of like, well, happening and not happening.
It wasn't on the docket Wednesday. And we had, we typically, Wednesday's meetings have been running way long. And we haven't had the opportunity to speak.
So, should we, should the clerk put them in for both, and then you decide whether you can do it or not?
Decide whether he's going to be a nice guy that day.
Well, I did, actually. I decided to do them both.
Okay. Well, I mean, what do you want to do? I mean, it's, it gets a little-
I, I think that it probably, it probably should be, because Wednesdays tend to be longer, it should be on this night.
Okay.
All right. Anyone from the community care to say anything? Well, thank you for coming. Oh, wait a minute.
We do have one.
Catherine.
The timer running. Hello, and Happy New Year to everybody. Catherine Adelaide, Nine Courtland, here on behalf of No Cannabis in Carroll. Um, I guess I just wanted to, uh, thanks for the time that we had together. But, uh, now that it's a new year, I would like to reiterate, uh, No Cannabis in Carroll's, uh, outrage and concern about the, quote, "medical marijuana" issue. And I use the term loosely, as it is a shrewd marketing technique to deceive the, most of the people about what medical cannabis really is. Um, I hope it's still sticking in everybody's brain that true medical marijuana has already been approved by the FDA. There's two pills that are cann- synthetic cannabinoids that more than adequately address every possible concern regarding the true medical use of marijuana, of cannabis. So, uh, I know at one time that was a little bit of the Council line, and I hope that's, will be, hopefully, never mentioned again as a reason to bring anything like that in, in the city of Tonny Town. In terms of some new information, um, I did speak with Shannon Thompson, a CVS pharmacist, right up at the corner here. And, um, she said that, she assured me that anybody who goes to their doctor and gets a prescription for synthetic cannabinoid, like Marinol, for example, that they would fulfill, they would fill that prescription. So, I just want to assure the Council that nobody who needs, really needs this is going to miss out on it if the Council otherwise restricts the, um, the actual pot that's coming into town. Also, she said that the demand is actually so minimal that they don't stock it, that they would order it if a prescription came in. But that's how little it's being used. So, um, the state-approved medical marijuana, which is the stuff that you smoke, and is completely illegal by federal law, again, um, I just really want to put a picture in your brain. If the state, you know, legalizes prostitution, will the City Council be taking a position to invite a business, a whorehouse, into Tonny Town? And I want you to see it on the same level. And I doubt that the feds are going to say, it's so dangerous that there is a federal law against prostitution. But there's, you know, kind of a number of things that citizens who move into Carroll County and Tonny Town expect from, you know, where we're living, in terms of the safety, well-being of our families. And that would be, you know, gambling, drugs, and prostitution. So, I think it's really important, again, to reiterate that what's coming in here is a precursor. What's attempting to come into here is a precursor to recreational marijuana. And I understand that in the zoning, what you're doing with the zoning is an attempt to, I mean, I'll, that source will remain nameless, but a Tonny Town police officer assured me it was going to get here, the recreational type would be here in less than two years. So, I'm glad that's a good foresight to begin that process. But more importantly is that what would really take care of what's attempt, this, what's called medical marijuana, which is smoking pot will never be medicine. It's not approved by the FDA, and they never will approve it, because smoking itself, pot contains carcinogens. So, that distribution form is what's really being pushed across the country and what's coming in here. And the way to really address that now is to pass a resolution that says all medical distribution of medical cannabis must be through a pharmacy. And that'll take care of your immediate zoning. That takes care of the zoning, the immediate zoning issue you're working on. For that, and also, it will take care of any grandfathering issues that would, that would happen. You have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments on the agenda tonight?
Hi, Robin Fraser, 142 Bentley Street. I wanted to bring Don's regrets first, for missing Wednesday and today. He, as Direct, Executive Director of Agora Ministries, gets called on mission trips a couple of times a year, and he is in the Philippines and will return on the nineteenth. So, um, that's why he's not, not with y'all. Uh, I thought maybe Joe would fill you in on Wednesday, but I missed the beginnings of last Wednesday, so I wasn't sure if you knew that. So, anyway, he sends his regrets. Um, a couple of things that were spoken about on Wednesday, um, that I, and, and on today's agenda that I wanted to clarify. It looks like the campaign finance stuff, we'll have another chance to ask some questions, because I did have some questions about, um, uh, organizations donating to a campaign. Like, when, um, uh, Councilman Fraser and I were supporting Joe Vigliotti's race, we, um, got the Tri-District Republican Club to support him, and we made flyers, and we went door-to-door. And, and so, we spent a little money on that campaign. Is that going to be, then, require the Tri-District Republican Club to report to the Ethics Commission? What we spent, who gives us money, or what? Do you know the answer to that question, or should?
I, I, my, my, my reading of the document is that anyone who contributes money to support a candidate needs to report that money.
And the candidate needs to report that as well.
Or any organization that, that contributes money to support a candidate needs to report that money.
Okay, so it's just the reporting of the money that was donated, not the reporting of where your funding came from?
Oh, I don't know that that's addressed.
Well, if it's coming from a club, then it would be reported.
The club will have to report it.
From the club, but not from everybody who donated to the club.
I don't think the individuals have to be.
That would end up being responsibility of the club to report in their ethics of that.
Right.
Right, because clubs don't-
Right.
Report who gives to them.
We don't need to know where the club got the money. We need to know what money the club put to a candidate or candidates. And then the candidate will have to say where the money came from, and then how that money was spent on their campaign.
Okay, and if an organization like, um, Jack Ames Right to Life did a robocall?
Mm-hmm.
If the candidate didn't know that, what is, whose responsibility is that?
The organization.
Well, who recorded it? I mean, if you, if you're doing that, obviously the candidate knew, because they used their voice.
No, the Right for Life people did it. The Right for Life people put out a robocall saying, "We support this candidate, Joe-"
Correct.
Vigliotti, because he's a, uh, he supports life.
Right, and the-
And, and it didn't have-
The campaign finance-
They did it.
Right. The campaign finance specifically talks about robocalls and what's required of them. They need to state the organization making the call at the very beginning. Um, and they would be responsible. If they're actively involved in helping a candidate become elected, whether it's directly with the candidate or not, they will have to report that money spent for them.
To Tonny Town's Ethics Commission, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and how will they know that?
How would who know that?
How will the Right to Life people know that when they do that, they're supposed to report to the Tonny Town Ethic Commission?
I think it's important for anyone who gets involved in the campaigns or in any of that sort of soliciting, needs to know the law. In the same way, for anyone who walks door-to-door and tries to sell things, oh, how do they know they need a permit? Well, you need to be familiar with the law.
Okay, but if they, if they do that, and they don't report to the Ethics, who, who is that a violation against? The candidate or the organization?
The organization, and there would be a fine.
I just want to make sure, because that's-
No, if, if the candidate approved it, it would have to state on there that the candidate had approved it. And the candidate would have to report that they, you know, allowed or accepted that donation, if you will. Um, if it was outside of the candidate, no, they wouldn't be penalized for that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I know that you didn't have treasurers-
Correct.
And candidate is responsible for whatever happens with the accounting of their funds.
That's correct.
So, I wanted to be clear on that, because that could happen, and I wanted to understand it. Okay, on the water, you mentioned the budget and the water and sewer rates, the budget's coming up. What is the timing of the budget, and how do, how does someone have input into, um, the water sewer rates?
Well, the process basically is starting very soon. First step is that the department heads all submit their submittals. And then, once the budget's put together, that submittal goes to the mayor. And after the mayor gets that, then it goes to the council members. And then, after that, that it's approved, it gets published as a, as a, um-
Draft.
Draft.
So, I know there was talk about, um, the types of things that Councilmen Fraser and Vigliotti put together for lowering water and sewer rates, like tiering or front-footage fees. Will that be considered somewhere in there, or is there, they have to?
No, they have to present it.
Okay, so the councilmen have to present it to you?
We, we, we will have budget workshops. Once the, once we have a, a form of a budget, we'll conduct budget workshops and discuss what the staff and-
Right.
I have prepared. And that'll give the, the Council, as well as the public, because these are public meetings-
Right.
Chance to add, have input on, or make suggestions in the budget. And, you know, it'll, it'll be a matter of deciding whether it's, whether they, it's something that we want to do or we don't want to do.
Okay. And I, um, just because I try to keep up on what's happening in the economy, I was looking at, um, house, housing sales in Tonny Town. And just on Zillow, I know they probably don't capture everything, but they had about a hundred and two properties that are for sale in Tonny Town. And I noticed that foreclosure kind of popped up a lot. So, I went through all hundred and two to see how many of them were either foreclosures or pre-foreclosures. And fifty-three of them were foreclosures or pre-foreclosures, which is over fifty percent of the hundred and two houses for sale that Zillow had as for Tonny Town. That's a really high percentage, and I-
So, the rumor of an improved economy is just a rumor, isn't it?
Right.
Well, and I hope you all consider that. I understand that, uh, that the Commissioners are talking about raising taxes. So, that might be an extra burden. And, um, you know, not surprising, but, uh, will be a burden. And so, I, I hope you'll keep those things in mind and work really hard at getting that water rate down, so there's not an extra burden on everybody. And I thought I'd give that, it would be very interesting, actually, to see how many of these foreclosures, they have their addresses, are late on their water bill. Because it could be a lot of them.
Probably all of them.
It could, could quite well be.
If they can't pay their mortgages, you're not going to pay their water bill.
Typically, if that occurs and we're aware of it, we shut the water off.
But prob, maybe leading up to it.
No, we shut them off.
No, no, no. I'm saying in previous quarters, they, they may be people that were late. It'd be an interesting study.
Right.
And one last thing. I just wanted to apologize. I got a letter today. I opened it. It was addressed to Don, but it didn't say personal or confidential, and I thought it might have something to do with the meeting tonight. So, I opened it, and it's a letter, uh, from the mayor saying that I wasn't really invited to the Christmas party. And I had no idea, and I just wanted to say I was sorry that I came to the employees' Christmas party and really wasn't invited. And I apparently owe you fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents. And I wish you would have just told me that. I sat with you. And you could have said, you know, "You're really not supposed to be here." And I would have said, "I'm sorry," and I would have left.
I would never have done that, Robin. I enjoyed your company, so.
Oh, but you'd like my money.
Notice all the, we, we only had budgeted for the employees and the staff to attend. And it's, I, I just felt that we needed to let you know that, that's all.
Okay, well, I saw Mr. Eball there. He is not an elected official, a city official.
That's right. It's open to special guests that we invite. Mayor invites them.
Okay.
We can bring in, we also invite in retirees.
Okay.
But spouses are not invited.
Well, I'm sorry. We didn't know. Well, I'm sorry, we didn't know, I mean, Don and I go everywhere together.
You have the invitation?
Yeah, I, I hadn't seen it, but I'm sure he didn't see it, but it does say employees and cit, city officials only, it doesn't say retirees, special guests, or, I guess other people know, because they were invited.
Next year, we'll make sure we do that.
And, um, uh, I just wanted to say, I'll, I don't have fourteen dollars and forty-seven cents today, but when I get it, I will give it to you, and I hope this wasn't written to go in Don's bad boy file, uh, but he, I'll assure you that we didn't realize that.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to make a comment?
Am I the only person in the room that doesn't know what CMC is? You all start out talking about this alphabet soup, you go on and on, and I'm lost.
I apologize. Community Media Center, they're the folks that, that operate Channel 23, where you see these programs on cablevision and, uh, among other things, they have other channels too, but that's, that's what it is, Community Media Center.
Okay, it's a big help if you start a big discussion and say what the letters mean. Now, I understand that we're halfway through the water hike now, and I'm wondering if next month, at the March meeting, the numbers from the six months would be doubled, so that we have some numbers to go on for setting up the next budget?
I'm sorry, Barb?
We're halfway through the year...
Right.
Since the water rate hike.
Right.
So, next month, in March, could you double the mon, the six months, the money brought in in six months, and we could use it as a temporary number to work on...
The budget, that's what we always do.
The budget coming up.
That's what we always do.
All right, cool, I'm catching up with you. And also, could we get a report on how the late fees are going? Has that been implemented yet?
No, we're not going to...
Five percent, ten percent, fifteen?
No, we're not going to implement that until we get a new system.
Oh, I see.
The old system cannot do that, we have to wait till we get the new system implemented to do that.
Okay, I thought you did it with a pencil.
Two thousand accounts is pretty, you know, no, we don't do that with a pencil.
I know you got two thousand, how many are late?
I don't know, but, but we're not going to, you know, we are not going to do that until the new system comes in.
Okay.
I mean, it's pretty, you know, you can ask Brad how laborious it is just to go through the one exercise we're doing, and to do that...
It's a great way to spend my Tuesday mornings, that's for sure.
And, yeah...
But it, the, the new system is in process, it's not something that's way in the future, we're, we're developing that now.
Okay.
Most likely, we're looking for something around the first, around the July.
Right.
Anyone else have any comments? Well, thank you all for participating tonight, and if there's no further business to come before council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Here a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, so carry. Stay warm.
No, I didn't, have to pick it up off, Brad.
Hey, Diane.
Wait a minute.
What did I tell you about the fixed pothole?
Ah.
Tell me they weren't fixed this week, huh?
See, it's all done wrong.
Well...
How much did the Steelers pay to get that job done?
So, what's one Cincinnati? I'd have fired that guy right when he was...
Well, um, I told him by the end of the week, we'll see who's fired.
Nobody.
Well, I tell you...
I think Marvin Lewis is probably going to...